Good morning. The Council now will continue to scrutinize the Employment Amendment Bill 2017. Now we deal with provisions that clauses with amendment. I propose the question to you that the following clauses will be debated, four and five. Dr Fernando Chong will move his three groups of amendments as set out in the appendix in the script. First group of amendments seeks to amend clause four, and the second, third groups of amendments seek to amend clause five respectively. Members may now proceed to a joint debate. I will first call upon Dr Chong to speak and move his first group of amendments. Upon conclusion of the debate, the committee will first move on Dr Chong's first group of amendments. In respect of whether Dr Chong's first group of amendments is passed or not, he may move his second group of amendments. If Dr Chong's second group of amendments is passed, he will withdraw his third group of amendment. Dr Chong, you may now move your first group of amendments. Chairman, I move my first group of amendments to amend clause four as set out in the appendix to the script. Are you going to continue to speak? Chairman, the first group of amendment, this is to amend clause four bracket one. The main part of the amendment is that in the case of unreasonable and unlawful dismissal, where the court is satisfied that the unlawful and unreasonable dismissal is proved, and that re-engagement or reinstatement is reasonably practicable, and that civil compensation is suitable. The court will then make an order for reinstatement or re-engagement. But what is reasonably practicable? If you consider it on the face of it, of course, the court will use the perspective of a reasonable man, that it is feasible. But in order to make it more specific as to what is reasonably practicable, I raised a number of points for the court to consider. A number of members said that my amendment would render the court unable to decide in the case when an employer has engaged a replacement for the employee. This fact cannot be taken into account when deciding whether it is reasonably practicable. I don't want to change that consideration. I just want to make it more specific. I think the court may consider two factors. First, if the employer has engaged a replacement for the employee, the court has already decided that it is unlawful and unreasonable dismissal. Reinstatement is for the person to work in the same post, and re-engagement is for the person to work in a similar post. We, of course, want the situation to be restored to its original situation. If not, then the person may be employed to a similar post. When the court decides whether it is reasonably practicable, first of all, the employer has to prove that if a replacement is not immediately engaged for the employee, the work cannot be carried out. Say, for example, in a company, there are only three people. Every post is important. Say, for example, this is a receptionist. Every day, the company opens a stall to receive customers. Someone has to man the front desk and answer telephone calls. If it so happened that the receptionist is the aggrieved party subject to unreasonable and unlawful dismissal, after the dismissal, the case goes to court, and the court is satisfied that it is unlawful and unreasonable dismissal. And in the meantime, the company has to employ someone else to replace that person. If the employer proves to the court that if an engagement of a replacement is not done immediately, the company cannot operate, then the company has to take that into account. So it's not the case that you are not allowed to engage a replacement, making the whole thing not reasonably practicable. Well, if a replacement has already engaged, can the employer prove to the court that if I don't engage a replacement, the company cannot continue to operate? For an SME with less than ten employees, with a person missing, there will be a huge impact on productivity. So you have to explain to the court that if I don't employ a replacement, my company cannot operate. The company will suffer huge losses, and there will be a huge impact to the company, and the court has to take that into consideration. That is exactly what my amendment is. Don't say that my amendment will render the court unable to take that into account. This is just to make it more specific. Secondly, the employer can prove that after unlawful and unreasonable dismissal of the employee, the employee never indicated that he or she would like to be reinstated or re-engaged. And within a reasonable period of time, a replacement has been engaged. Of course, this is very reasonable. If you are an employer, someone is sacked, and the court deems that the dismissal is unreasonable and unlawful, if the sacked employee has never said that he would like to be re-employed, and the employer has waited for a reasonable period of time, of course. The interpretation of that is left to the court. Say, for example, the sacked employee has not turned up for two months, and there is no indication from the employee that he or she would like to go back to the company, and the employer is of the view that they can't have the vacancy for too long. A replacement has to be engaged. Then it means that that will be one of the reasons why it is not reasonably practicable. This is easier to accept in the case of an SME because the scale of operation is smaller. With a person missing, it will have a bigger impact on the operation of the company. So I've only added these two conditions, so that when the court decides whether it is reasonably practicable for the employee to be reinstated or re-engaged, the factors can be more specifically spelt out. I don't understand why other members oppose to it so strongly. And another result is that the employer would not want to engage a replacement. This is similar to the UK's Employment Act 1996. This gives the aggrieved party basic protection. The employer has to explain when the employer explains that I have to engage a replacement so that the sacked employee cannot be reinstated. This is in place of giving the employer the chance to just say that we have already engaged someone else. I can't re-engage or reinstate you. The Labour Advisory Board and some other members said that should my amendment be passed, there will be cases of abuse. How? Because you will have to overcome three hurdles. First, the court will have to be satisfied that the dismissal is unlawful and unreasonable. It is not easy to prove that case whether it is unreasonable. In a case of unlawful, it is even more specific. Say, for example, well, if the employee is not pregnant or for reasons of the conduct of the employee, redundancy, say for example such reasons, well, then unless these are the reasons, it will be unlawful dismissal, so the threshold is quite high. For the thousands of cases we have encountered, there aren't many cases involving employees who would like to be reinstated. And if the court issues an order for reinstatement or re-engagement, there has been none of such cases. We hope that without the prerequisite to get the consent of the employer, hopefully, the number of cases of reinstatement or re-engagement orders will increase. The court will also have to be satisfied that it will be an appropriate arrangement and a suitable remedy to have the reinstatement or re-engagement. It is not easy. Majority of SMEs are small. Well, if you go back to work and you're not on good terms with the employer, it will be very difficult to continue to work in that workplace. So we're talking about bigger companies. And even so, majority of employees would not have good relationship with an employer that have sacked them unreasonably and unlawfully. And as some other members have said, that you can't just try to make something work when the relationship has broken down irretrievably. No one is willing to work in such a hostile environment. That's why, especially members from the FTU, I would like to remind you that a lot of these cases are from bigger companies. They want reinstatement or re-engagement because they are from the labour union. When they try to do the work of the labour union, what they have been suppressed. They want to be reinstated, not because for their own benefit. They have been unlawfully, unreasonably dismissed, and yet they ask for, they insist on reinstatement because they don't want the suppression to affect the labour union. They don't want the labour union to lose the leadership or an executive officer. So if you support labour rights, you will have to support my amendment. On top of that, the court will have to be satisfied that reinstatement or re-engagement order is reasonably practicable. My amendments are very reasonable. So when the court decides whether to make the order, the court will have more specific factors to take into account instead of letting the employer to say, well, I have already employed someone else. There are also other amendments.
May I ask the President, in this debate, do we have to cover the second and the third group of amendments? If so, I will need to speak again because I ran out of time. Yes, you correct. And I put the question to you that the first group of amendments moved by Dr Fernando Chong be passed. Does any other member wish to speak? Secretary for Labour Welfare, Mr Leng Yucheng.
In relation to the reinstatement order, there are a lot of concern that whether the employees will abuse this and pose difficulty for the employers. President, the Dr Chang's amendments have taken into account a host of factors. And the ultimate decision is not decide upon the employee, is how to let the court to decide. That employer, with sufficient proof and grounds to object to this, this is a clear fact. It's not the employee can abuse it such that I can have this way whatever they want. So on the second reading debate, I mentioned this, and it is mentioned by Dr Chang as well. To pass this threshold is actually quite difficult. First, you have to prove it to be unreasonable and unlawful dismissal. To fulfill both conditions, so it's so dismissed and then they have been asked for reinstatement. So to pass through both hurdles, you can imagine how hard it is. The next hurdle will be to go through the courts. If not, you will be granted upon application. The employers can also provide a lot of evidence or grounds to object. So on the issue of reasonably practicable, we don't need to be concerned so much about the potential abuse, of course. And in terms of labour relations, there are a lot of problems within, especially the small organizations, SMEs, and their problems do exist. However, I believe that for the SMEs, like Dr Fernando Chang, have less problems. As you noted, for the SMEs, they usually can reach a solution at the Labour Tribunal without reaching the courts. And the majority of their problems usually lies with the medium or the larger organizations, which is some of the employees speaking out for other employees for their labour rights, and where this give rise to such problems. Like Dr Chang said just now, these sort of problems usually had to do with labour unions or instead of the usual tightness at work that led to dismissal and so on. So this has to do with the employer relations at larger organizations. So please don't be overly worried that upon the passage of this bill, there will pose a major obstacle to the SME operations. I wouldn't say that being worried too much. However, the likelihood is extremely low. I hope that we can all take note. So I must say that for the setting up the reinstatement orders should help the labour sector to allow, enhance the statutory powers of trade and unions. I know that we do not have collective bargaining rights at the moment. Without this, it's hard for the worker representatives to discuss with the employer on wages, entitlements, or work environment improvements. They're quite difficult. Since they don't have this statutory position established, so with this, we can encourage the workers to organize themselves in safeguarding, enhancing relations. They can also form a relationship with the management or the employers to foster communication. And on this, I think it's actually a positive because the workers don't have to worry all the time that they'll be dismissed or to discuss or negotiate with the management. And the labour relations at the government's claims that it's about more communication. However, if we're not speaking on equal terms, it's quite hard to communicate. Without communication, there will give rise to a lot of complex issues. If this obstacle and this psychological threat is removed because the workers are concerned about losing their job, and usually they need this job to sustain their livelihood and so on. And we all know that for all subsequent retaliation and all the intimidation for speaking out with a threat of dismissal. So this kind of threats have put a lot of pressure on employees. For the Calum Motor Bus Strike Incident, for the bus captain who spoke out, they claimed to have retaliated in form of dismissal. If it's not under public pressure, and what if this incident did not attract public attention, and then they were dismissed and applied for reinstatement? And if the court can prove that the work must not be carried out by others or this term dismissed as necessary in allowing reinstatement, I believe it's greatly helpful in helping the workers to strive for better entitlements. So I agree to Dr Chang's amendments. As for the further some sealing, I will discuss another occasion because it's actually quite important as well. Even though I should not speak on this round. So a lot of people shares views that the Dr Chang's amendments will be prone to abuse by employees or destroy the harmony between employer and employees. I think we should take it from a positive perspective. And for the harmonious labour relations, not only benefit the company, also benefit to the whole society as well. And so I submitted. May I remind the members it's a joint debate, so we can discuss other amendments as well. Mr Wang Ting Kwan.
The saying goes, the birds will always choose the best tree to set up their home. If a employee happened to come across in a scrupulous employer, I would just leave. Not only would that employee leave, the whole staff will leave en masse. What's the point of working for these unscrupulous employers? And frankly speaking, we're all just looking to make money. So Dr Chang's mentioned that even if you be reinstated, and then the relationship is so broken down and frequent loggerheads. So what's the point of forcing through, like you said? In this case, they should just be entitled to appropriate compensation. Well, when you get to the courts, the labour relations is irreveribly damaged. So what's your solution? Well, let's have an amicable separation. Well, as to be assured of their entitlements better than... So what's the point of bringing the company down? So will the employer force the employee into a corner? What pleasure does it have? I don't think that we should not be that polarizing. If there's such unscrupulous employers in society, so I think the whole staff will just simply resign instead of individual staff. How could this sort of company still survive? It wouldn't close down long ago with nobody's willing to work for them. Not only there will be no staff working for them, there wouldn't be any customers for them either. Do you think these companies can still survive? Well, to be frank, for Dr Fernando Chang and for Mr Leng Yucheng, they hit a major point, that is the issues of trade unions. The corporations, companies have their own culture and discipline. And sometimes for the individual members' requests or entitlements, in reality, we never have, can ever be given too little and then or too much. Between give and take, they should have a civilized discussion instead of forcing your way through. For example, the Prostopition Camp and the opposition camps, we have different stance. They still have to sit down together. So this so happens in our everyday interaction. And for the first amendment, as well as the subsequent amendments proposed by Dr Chang, I have a lot of doubts that do we have to to polarize the conflict? Is that do we have to come to this sort of redress? And on labour relations, as a young person, that's not the way I saw how the elders handle it. And so, does it mean that the employee must be at odds? I think both sides are co-dependent on each other. Thank you, President. Mr Alokin.
And thank you, President. I don't think Mr Wang Ting Kwan need to be so angry. I'm not. Chairman, if not mistaken on the criticism of Dr Chang's, that he claims that Dr Chang's amendment is just simply a try to steamroll your way through. So if Dr Chang's amendments have been passed by this council today, that will take and simply bulldozing or steamrolling or forcing your way through. I don't understand if this English or Chinese. So I think there's some past president that has to do with this reinstatement orders and will give us some food for thought. What I mean was, I've heard the members have spoken on this bill, whether they stand for the businesses or for the labors. They touch on the same thing. There's no point in forcing your way through. But does that mean that our legal cannot afford better legal protection? I think there's room for a discussion. So what do you mean by no point you're forcing way through? I think it's quite plain to see. If the employer and the employee have such a huge discord, and at the end, they have to see each other in court. So we have to consider...
So we have to consider that if I were judge, so in issuing the reinstatement order. And I so that to you to return the company, would that be still a good a benefit to the employee? So looking at the Dr. Chang's amendment. And they have established the role of the court, that the labor or the tribunal or the court. That in deciding that whether. Uh is it reasonably practicable to reinstate the employer, they must not take it into account. That unless for the making finding for the purpose of subsection, unless. When considering the unreasonably practicable. We have to look into the employee-employer relations and I believe the court that when making the finding. If they both know, well, um this after hearing both having their cases, they would. They would decide that if we reinstate the worker. Well, um they would uh let the deterioration or the labor relations had never quite addressed the problem. In this case, I believe that the court will take own uh consideration and finding. And well, um making a finding in accordance with the circumstances, so I think this go both ways.
It's not the case that as soon as Dr. Fernando Jones amendment is passed, then there will be forced reinstatement. So um as a result of this amendment. It will always be the employer who loses out. It won't be that, now let's say it's a SME, they're just one boss and a few staff members. So uh if say because of labor dispute, I have to reengage the employee at the end. Of course, uh there can't be any harmony in the office and we can't um just forget what's happened. But if we talk about big business, it's a big department and that boss is not actually the owner of the business. So with reinstatement order, the staff member may be transferred to a different department. And then 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 it is very possible then for the reinstatement to work. I've dealt with a case myself. I don't know if this um bill would help in that case, but let let us consider that case. There's a resident who sought help from me. He's a teacher. Um he's targeted by the school principal, that's the labor dispute. And he's asked to do uh work that's not supposed to be his duties. And eventually the teacher feels really bothered by that. And he feels targeted by the school head, but then many teachers support him. They didn't want to see him being targeted by the school head. Uh but eventually he left the school, he was made to leave the school. Now the case did not uh go to the labor tribunal, it didn't go to court. How did this school handle the case? At the end. He's allowed to be transferred, um what do you mean by transfer? Well, because this is a school sponsoring body. So instead of teaching one school, is transferred to another school run by the same school sponsoring body. And so that's the way to deal with this labor dispute. So what what does this case tell us, that it's uh it's not necessary to take every case to court. And even if we have to go through a government department to do with it, for example, the labor tribunal. Uh in mediating the disputes of the two parties, perhaps some settlement could be found. But why is the amendment important here? Say if uh it happens that um there's no way for the two parties to agree on anything, then. We will have to resort to the legislation in dealing with the labor relations. For the first amendment of Dr. Fernando Jones, as I said. It's not the case that um anything is being bulldozed through. As for the second amendment. I think it's really all about the value of workers. In my earlier speech, I said that let's say if the value of workers is only is only seventy two thousand dollars. And then the workers have tried to form themselves into union and the price or the cost of the employer to. Nip that union at the butt is is um is only five seventy plus thousand dollars. Well, then there's strong incentive to do so. But I think yesterday someone said that uh. In most cases where compensation had to be paid, um the amount didn't reach seventy thousand dollars. I think um in most cases compensation is only twenty thousand dollars, I hope I've quoted you correctly. But anyway, so when in many cases, there's no need to pay the maximum amount. But why do we still want to increase the maximum amounts then? Uh because we want to um the cost to have deterrent flagged. Let's say if some staff members want to form a trade union. And then employers start considering. The dismissal of the staff member, then the cost shouldn't be just seventy thousand dollars. Well, we should leave it to the court to decide, having um considered the circumstances. So for the first and second amendments of Dr. Fernando Jones, I think find them desirable. And I hope you will consider that too. And finally, I would like to respond to Dr. Lo Chi Kwan. Please uh don't rule me uh rule this as a digression. Because the reinstatement bill has much to do with the LAB. Last night, then Dr. Law said, the position of the LAB is the position of the government. If. Dr. Fernando Jones amendments are passed today, the government may consider withdrawing the bill. Now I hope I haven't um misunderstood him. I think we need to consider an an basic question. What exactly is the consensus of the LAB? Let me talk about the composition of the Labor Advisory Board. Now, the um LAB is set up in accordance with Article one four four of the International Labor Convention, is a tripartite consultative body. Ms. Al Nakkin, we are now in committee stage to debate the three amendments, yes, I know, but we need to consider the consensus of the LAB. Now, if you continue along that line, I will have to stop you. The consensus of LAB, well, actually in earlier speeches, um there's mention of the consensus of the LAB. And that is really the key issue to in this debate. Why is that reinstatement is such controversial issues because it can't get past LAB? So why is it that LAB wouldn't support this? Because for employee, there's one government representative and five. Um employee representatives, it's a block vote, it's not um really a democratic system. That's why um the voices of the uh workers are not represented on the LAB. The ILO came to the International Labor Organization, came to visit Hong Kong and said that this is um in breach of the convention. So if we think this is the consensus of the LAB, it's not a democratic consensus, thank you. Dr. Fernando Jones, well, this is a joint debate, Mr. Chairman. So we will consider all the amendments together. Uh the clerk just informed me about that, so I'm going to explain the other amendments. Dr. Zhang, at the start of the the debate, I already made it clear that this is a joint debate. If you have listened carefully, um then you wouldn't need the clerk to remind you by by way of a note. Yes, I heard that, but I just wanted to play safe. But anyway, some members spoke today and the secretary spoke yesterday, I would respond to all that. Just I explained the uh content of my first amendment. It is we have to consider whether it's practicable. And the court would ask the employer to prove two things. I won't repeat what the two conditions are, uh but I find I think these conditions are important. Now let me explain my second amendment. Which is about the compensation amount. Uh this is to amend clause five of the bill. Uh clause five says that where there is a U D. If the employer has not complied with the reinstatement or engagement order. By the date specified by the court, then the employer must pay a sum to the employee. And that sum is three times of the monthly wage of the employee with a cap of seventy two thousand five hundred dollars. I my proposal is to increase the further sum to six times the employee's average monthly wage without a ceiling. Why did I propose this amendment? Well, it's it's simple. We're talking about buying out a court order, so in principle, actually, I do not agree to such an approach. Let me explain the concerns later. So, okay, let's say the employer could buy. Out the court order, but it's at such low cost. Three times the monthly salary or seventy two thousand five hundred dollars, whichever is less. Uh to the employer, the cost is just too uh the price is just too low. Now, just now, Mr. Wang Ting Kwan said that these amendments would only um cause more conflict. But 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 why should that be? Because these are reasonable amendments. And then she said that he also said that there's no happiness in forced reinstatement. But why did the employer dismiss the employee? And why is it that in court is proven that is unlawful dismissal? Because there's a good chance that because these staff members are involved in the labor union or they even are leaders in the labor union. So the employers want to remove them. And so the employers don't care, even if it's unlawful, they will still dismiss the employees. But then the court said, no, you cannot do that. This is unreasonable and unfair dismissal. And the court believes you should reinstate the staff member and the reinstatement is practicable. So a court order is issued and then the employer said, I don't care, I'll just buy out the court order, I won't listen to the court order. And that's really causing conflict, why? Because the employer wants to remove this um thorn in his backside. And so why but why would this staff member want to stay on even though there is so much um tension in the relationship? Because he wants to keep the labor union intact. Now, Mr. Wang Ting Kwan was talking about SMEs, but we're not, we're talking about the big businesses. Or even big public organizations such as universities. You see recently, many universities have have uh this fires their teaching staff. I just retired from the Poly in Technic University. The the university dismissed some eight or nine instructors. And then uh two, three months ago, again, they dismissed six or seven lectures from the um. Mathematic school. So that's why um that we that that we have to, the labor union would speak up and then. And what is the cost for the employer to dismiss people joining labor union? Seventy two thousand five hundred dollars, but a lecturer could have a monthly wage of a hundred thousand dollars. Well, it has happened, Cathay has fired over forty pilots each has a salary of more than one hundred thousand dollars. Dollars, so the cost is less than one month of wage and they could choose to ignore a court order. Well, would you say the price to pay is too small? Now, in principle, the arrangement, this dismissal was not acceptable in the first place, it's not acceptable in the first place. But now they can just buy out the themselves out of the court order with um such a small price.
If the person's salary is say a bit higher. Then you only have to pay them just one month's salary, roughly that amount. And it would be better than the payment in lieu. You, of course, will have to pay, still pay the payment in lieu, but when the sum is so small, then there is no deterrent effect. How can you allow employers to pay such a small price to flout the court order? The court. Reached that decision after having taken into account um three factors. On top of that, you set a ceiling, there are four pieces of legislation against discrimination. If you discriminate against someone because of disability and you fire that person. Compensation is subject to no limit for family status, um gender, race. And the person is dismissed as a result of discrimination, the compensation is not subject to any limit. How come you said seventy two thousand five hundred or three months uh. Three times the employee's average monthly salary, we're talking about at least um six. Months, about fifty two weeks are just amended to the minimum amount of the UK Employment Act. Six months, subject to no ceiling. Six month salary is not a high deterrent effect, but it will make the employer think twice. It's a sum to be paid. If the court order is flouted, they will have to pay a higher price and you call that unreasonable. And you call that me trying to bulldoze it over. The previous amendment was to uh ask the court to consider certain conditions um. Before deciding whether it is reasonably practicable to reinstate or reengage the employee. And I've said it very specifically that it will not affect SMEs. For this group of amendments, I just amend to increase the price to be paid for breaching a court order. In other countries, say for example, UK, this is only the minimum. I'll continue to explain about my third group of amendment, it is technical. It's aims to. Amend the administration's approach to. Change the amount specified in this subsection by notice. It is of a negative vetting, it's a piece of subsidiary legislation, yes, that is the usual convention. I want to change it to positive vetting. Because of their poor record, the poor track record. This piece of legislation was enacted in nineteen ninety seven, it's been over twenty years. In nineteen ninety nine, you yourself admitted, Mr. Al Nakkin, yesterday. Cited a document saying that the Labor Department in nineteen ninety nine undertook to review it. And there was a consensus in the Labor Advisory Board. Well, the um consent of both parties should not be a prerequisite. And there was consensus and you talked to the international uh. And there was consensus and you talked to the international Labour Organization that there would be an amendment as soon as possible. Go back to the LAB report, the entire paragraph is there. Well, it's been many years you've been dragging your feet. You, it is a kind of filibustering. I don't understand why some other members accuse me of moving these amendments. To force the hand of the administration. As a result, they withdrew the second reading debate. That is ridiculous. Um my amendment was floated in twenty eighteen. Last time it was twenty sixteen when the um bill was withdrew, was withdrawn. And it was towards the end of the legislative year and it's nothing to do with Dr. Law here. So you have been dragging your feet for a number of years. Why, how would we um ensure that it won't happen again? Positive vetting. It allows members to uh move a resolution to change the amount. If you wait for the administration to change it, don't hold your breath. And as you know that, well, for um. Positive um vetting is four plus three. That means uh over a period of four weeks, if no one moves any motion um amendments, then they will be endorsed. And if a a member asked to extend it for three weeks, then it will be extended for another three weeks. That's it. There are so many items on the agenda. If it is a member's motion or resolution. Well, you will have to easily wait for six, six months. And well, if it's just a four weeks. When the resolution, when the subsidiary legislation is passed, if it is not dealt with. Well, given the poor track record of the administration, why would we want to allow that to happen? We just want, I just want to take back um. The power to amend the amount back to the Legislative Council. By positive vetting. If the amount has seriously deviated from the current situation. And if the amount is of little deterrence effect, employers have been shown to abuse it. They only have to pay seventy two thousand five hundred dollars uh to sack um the head of uh Labor Union. Mister Wong Ting Kwan, you know full well, in the past, there are a lot of um trade union leaders. Of the left wing that have been sacked by employers. What did you, what did these organizations do? They stood firm in the face of these unscrupulous employers. Mister Wong Ting Kwan, you know full well that there has been a lot of sacrifice made by uh leaders of Labor Union. Labor movements of left wing, right wings, a lot of uh Labor Union leaders have been oppressed and suppressed. If they could have been reinstated or reengaged, they would have stood firm and they would have still been there. This is a protection against um someone who's been unlawfully or unreasonably dismissed. The person would be reinstated. Surely, Mister Wong, you would understand. You may represent the business sector, but I'm sure that you know full well about this piece of history. My amendment is not to create conflict. My amendment is to rationalize this uh piece of legislation. Doctor Law yesterday said that should my amendment be passed, then the bill um. Might be withdrawn. He does not say that it would definitely be the case. He said he did not rule the possibility. I do think that that such speech should be condemned. Because if you don't like it, you can ask members to vote it down. And you can't say that, well, I don't like it, uh so I'm gonna take it back. This is um just trying to, this is throwing your weight around. This is the executive throwing their weight around. Mister Holden Chow. Doctor Fernando Jones' three groups of amendment. For the first point, I've already covered it yesterday. Well, this bill has been. Foreverly discussed by the Labor Advisory Board. There was a consensus. The bill was reintroduced to the legal. So that it can come into effect as soon as possible. If all of a sudden, there are new amendments that is beyond the consensus cut. Of the LAB, say for example, the further sum, uh it was supposed to be three months and. Now someone wants to increase it to six months. The LAB has spent a lot of time to deliberate on this, and now you want to change it, it is not fair to them. I do think that we have to respect the LAB's uh decision. They have forced a consensus. If you want to increase the further sum from three times monthly salary to six times. Course, it will uh. Shock SMEs and a lot of employers because, well, for the further sum. You now have to pay six times the monthly salary instead of three. They will fear. A lot of SMEs encounter lots of difficulties. Already, you talk about um canceling of the offsetting mechanism under the MPF, and there is another blow. Well, it's uh, you want to increase it from three months to six months. So this will create difficulties to SMEs. It will create fear. In relation to Doctor Fernando Jones amendment, I would like to raise this point. I've been listening to him very carefully about um. Factors to be taken into account by the court. I would like to clarify here. The bill is very clear. If a court, if the court is to make a reinstatement order in the past, the consent of the employer has to be obtained. That is the current practice. Under the bill, there is already a step forward. In that consent from the employer is not required before. Uh an order for reinstatement is made. Of course, the court has to be satisfied that it is reasonably practicable. So an order can be made without the consent of the employer. In theory. If the employee wants to be reinstated. This will help them. Now, there is another step forward. According to Doctor Jones, he said that. When deciding whether it is reasonably practicable. The court. Will have to decide. Well, if the employer has engaged a replacement, the court cannot take that fact into account. That means if the employer has employed a replacement, the court cannot take that into account. If someone, if a replacement is engaged, that cannot be taken into account. That is what Doctor Jones amendment is about. That means the court cannot take this into account. That is, the employer has employed someone. Don't take that into account. It sounds like that it's entirely from the perspective of the employee. If reinstatement is wished, then there will be reinstatement order. Of course, there are some preconditions, saying that if that person has indicated that he would like to be reinstated. But in short, as you know, that if you take another step forward, it will. Send employers up in arms. If, say for example, in a dismissal, uh yes, it is wrong if it is unreasonable or unlawful. Of if, um well, for various reasons, the employer decides to fill the vacancy. Well, as we've always said that, well, don't force, don't force something. Don't force yourself when you know that you're not wanted. If the amendment is endorsed, that means you, the employer can't even employed. Uh a replacement. If the employee wants reinstatement, then. The employer will have to reinstate the employee. And the employee will have to be allowed to come back. Well, as we already said, like Mister Wong said, that, well, the relationship has irretrievably um broken down. And that still has to be. That has to still happen, well, from the perspective of SMEs, of course, that they will fear.
So I, my view is that um I, I do not agree with the amendments. Well, I just laid out my reasoning. And for the further sums. Um use and propose to abolish the ceiling of seventy two thousand five hundred dollars. Of course, uh so that we don't have a limit, so um just removing the ceiling, so and. So it shows that um the employees are priceless, instead of setting a price tag to buy them out. So, well, because it gave the impression that um the employees only worth that seventy two thousand five hundred dollars. What I disagree is that if you remove the ceiling. And the employers feel that is a bottomless pit. That we can't see what's the maximum amount. That if I don't comply with the reinstatement orders, or unless I'm not able to comply with the order and I have to uh make compensation. And there's no upper limit to my compensation. If the employers hear this. They will pose an actual operation difficulty. So they will have a concern inevitably. So for the three months to six months wages to them. This felt like as much as a latent, or even though it's not happened yet, I agree with what Mister Wong Ting Kwan said. That it, we can all think in each other's shoes, then we can um resolve unmakeably. Of course, we don't want this to happen. And this bill is about what if this really happened and how it should be dealt with. So when handling this, what will happen? So we talk about the invisible cost, the hidden costs rather. Here, all of a sudden, um if you raise to six months monthly wages. Oh, um the invisible cost to employers is quite high. And finally. All of this labor relation dispute and and the regulations are risen from it. I agree there should be regulations. And if we um make it too stringent, at the end. Which will be affected as is for those who would like to create a startups. Or those who would uh like to operate their own business. Because um after seeing all these regulations, they would think, uh before I start a business, I have to consider what. Um what would happen if I close the business and other unforeseen scenarios. And for the entrepreneurs. There will be a lot of concern, or maybe reduce the desire to start their own business. And um well, you have to have uh both bosses and employees in the society. So if the business is in shape, then the employees will benefit. Into created win-win situation for the smooth functioning of our society. And if the company got closed down and then the employees, yours seeing all this overregulation. And well, um well, instead of. Starting another business, they would just drop the idea. So we should just take the middle path. I hope that um we can just follow the government's amendment bill. And currently is built on the LB consensus. Why shouldn't we um take this step? If for anything that's beyond this consensus, I'm genuinely concerned. That for the SMEs, um they were not able to acceptable to them. So in the end, there's nobody, there's no one is a winner. So I support the government's. Um bill, I would not agree to Duffy Chan's amendments. President, so I submitted. Mister Felix Chong.
Yesterday, um on this um bill, amendment is not realistic. Upon the Court of Labor Tribunal ru- ruling. The employer. Um without his knowledge or consent, they would have to uh reinstate or reengage to dismissed employee. I understand why it had made such ruling because this wrong, wrong behavior is an illegal lawful or unreasonable. Uh dismissal, we hit both thresholds and the court determined that the employer is at fault, that. There will be no com- reasonable. So um as, so let's say, um they have a dispute and. And you're forcing the employee to be reinstated. So in reality. I believe that such likely is quite low. And for the two group of amendments, from group one and group two, is even further removed from reality. Let's say I dismiss an employee, uh you would not allow me to hire a replacement to fill the vacancy. And well, this is impossible. SMEs have a very small step and have dismissed someone. I must hire someone to replace the dismissed employee. I, so I have to, now I have to wait for the uh court to make a ruling on reinstatement before making another hire. How would this even happen? Especially dismissed employee can, within the nine months of dismissal, can go to the Labor Tribunal uh to seek for. Claim for relief to let him this. So for this nine months. What, what am I gonna do? I'm not like a large organization. Where I can uh transfer another employee to the post. Or from another department. And most of the SMEs were just have barely enough manpower. So you ask them to wait until at the end, it would have found to, to be illegal. So the SMEs will close as a result. And for the second group of amendments, for increasing in to six times average wage and with the ceiling removed is claimed to be. So for the sum of seven two thousand five hundred dollars, you can just buy out the labor rights or the uh dignity. However, they can be resolved by paying. So Doctor Jones claims that if we're not complying with the uh tribunal's order. You can just spend money to buy out the ruling. Then you shouldn't be moving this amendment. So you claim, so now that you have to remove the ceiling, it's all about the money. So just have the, to pay more. So does that mean by paying more, I can uh not comply with the court ruling? You can just as well and change it to imprisonment. So just have to pay more, instead of two, three times, you just need to pay six times. For for the Cathay pilots who spent over ten, hundred thousand dollars, and just have to pay six times his, their salaries. So now that money can solve all these problems. So this group of amendment, well, seems to be unreasonable to employees. So at the end, it all comes down to money. So money solve all kind of problems. So along with this thinking, this amendment is simply go against yourself. Simply put, I submitted, I object to Dr. Chen's amendment, Mr. Eddie Chu.
I speak to support Dr. Fernando Cheng's proposed amendments. Yesterday, Doc Secretary's Doc to Law's suspected threats, and, and we all come to understand something, that's all three group of amendments will eventually be defeated anyway. That's the political reality. So, and what's the point of saying such things when you know it won't be passed anyway? Just to reduce the criticism level against F T U, because they will vote against these amendments anyway. So why should we playing blackface? So you view as support and let the Dr. Chen's amendment pass, then the whole will withdraw, that will fit the F T philosophy, that we just talk to each other, and let's just negotiate to reach a consensus. So, um, this secretary making such move, so we asked you public opinion, the Dr. Chen's amendments are reasonable. If they are so unreasonable, like Mr. Holdin Chow and Mr. Felix Chong claim that almost like a monster in the world that would stop investing, that would, this kind of threats will not be necessary, because we'll be criticizing Dr. Chen's ourselves. And through the small gesture by the secretary, this illustrate the current state of Hong Kong. So we'll be upholding the L A B, but the reality was, what are the millions of workers on the street thinking? So according to the F T U, they're simply been hiding in the L A B, and for the standard working hours and so on. So we have to be pro-establishment and need to represent the workers, but at the end, you neither fish nor fowl, so been discussed yesterday at length already. And on the specific amendments by Dr. Cheng, so I would like to speak on this second group of amendments, of removing the ceiling of the further sum, as well increasing to six times the average monthly wages. And on the the members oppose the amendments will always cite the L A B, and claim the L A B decisions have always been right. And the pro-establishment camp have had misleading statements on the L A B. So Mr. Holdin Chow focused on the removal of the ceiling. For the amendment, have the exact wording that mentioned the removal of the ceiling, is simply delete the seven-two thousand five hundred dollars, and then substitute it by six times. So what do you think, what he claims by is no monthly ceiling, it's just your salaries, six times, six times. So there's no such thing as unlimited, as claimed by Mr. Holdin Chow, so I not repeat it here. So why do we have to remove the cap of seventy-two thousand and five hundred dollars? And Dr. Cheng just said, there are many types of workers, some of them are making a hundred thousand dollars per month. Some of them making fifty thousand or thirty thousand a month. And on the reinstatement orders, that you can, this can actually be bought out, this is quite ridiculous itself. So instead of make the court ordering the workers reinstated, you're simply, in effect, ordering the employer to make another payment. And considering the amount of further sums, we have to look at two angles. First, whether can it be commensurate enough to get, let the employer to have second thoughts? And second, and if it the regarded as an unlawful and reasonable dismissal and ordered reinstatement as for further sums will be insufficient for the employee.
So from the first point of view is about the employers. And of course, I would support Dr. Fernando Cheng's original amendment that you have disallowed. Because we shouldn't be allowing payment in place of reinstatement, but that amendment has been ruled out by you, so we're just raising the threshold, so employers might think twice. And we need to raise the thresholds, because we need to look at different types of jobs and different salary ranges. There's no way there should be a ceiling of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. So Dr. Zheng quoted some examples. For example, teaching staff at universities, they enjoy higher pay, because they're professionals. But then every time we talk about this issues, other members would like to narrow the scope, and just talk about SMEs. But here, we are talking about protecting the right to form unions, to mount a strike, or industrial action. Now, under what circumstances would someone become leader of trade, labor union? Of course, it's about a big enterprise, can't be an SME, SME won't, staff won't form a union. So we're talking about a big, big company with at least a few hundred staff members. So what do you mean that, that there won't be happiness in this reluctant relationship? No. Because I think we're talking about in these circumstances, we want to protect the rights of those who take the lead in unit, in labor actions. And so, and, and then we're not just talking about protecting the leader, but the all the staff. Because if the leader is removed, and there's no one to lead the staff. So it's important, therefore, that we protect the leader, and then we can protect the whole campaign. So we don't just base the further sum on the multiple of monthly wage, then it won't be determined enough. And then it will be like what Felix Chong said, that employees could just buy themselves out of this. Because the maximum is only seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. But that's exactly what Dr. Fernando Jung doesn't want to see. We won't want employers to be able to dismiss staff so easily. And that's another consideration. We're talking about employees trying to make a living. Now, it seems people have this wrong idea, that as soon as you dismiss the staff member, you have to pay this sum. No. Okay, you dismiss employee, and employee has to think this is unfair or unreasonable dismissal, and then and the case has to be taken to court or the labor tribunal, and and it will take a long time before decision is made, so it takes so much time and effort. Now, how many months would it take for the employee to sort this out? Can you give a performance pledge on the duration, Secretary? Well, no one knows how long it would take. Let's say I'm the recently dismissed employer, I wanted reinstatement. Then I'll be trapped in this lengthy process through the court. Now imagine the employee has to pay a mortgage, pay for the transportation costs, he has to support the family, children, parents, and so on. And what if his wage is one hundred thousand dollars a month, and maybe his household expenses add up to fifty, sixty thousand dollars per month? And you're just paying him seventy-two thousand dollars, thousand dollars? So, in other words, this is second penalty on the unfairly dismissed employee. That is, we should choose to go through the process, to fight for his rights. At the end, he is fined further, because he's only paid seventy thousand dollars. So don't forget about the unreasonable dismissal, just instead focus on finding another job. So you said, what you want? You have to consider it from the angle of employees. So six times the monthly salary is not at all excessive. And the seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars ceiling is just preposterous. For the first group of amendment by Dr. Fernando Cheng. Now, when court considers whether there should be reinstatement, the court should not consider the fact that there's already a replacement for an employee. Instead, Dr. Cheng is adding various conditions. But it doesn't mean that the employee cannot hire someone else. No, that's not the case. Rather, he's saying that if the employee has already got a replacement, unless, the court should not consider, unless there are certain conditions being met. And one condition is that the employer has to show, employer has to show that this is reasonable arrangement, there's nothing to be done about it. So this amendment does not stop employers from hiring replacement. So it's not as Mr. Felix Chong suggested, that employers will be in a difficult position in that three, six, or nine months while the case being considered. Now, for the amendment, it may seem technical, but it's crucial. That's the third group of amendment. Right now, the government wants to keep the power for, the right about power for making amendment. We just leave it to the government to make amendments, and there's no point of us having this lengthy discussion. We're having this long debate, because we want the different views of members could be consolidated into a collective this will. But even if we have done so, we have consolidated our views, then it's up to you, the government alone, to decide how to, how to amend the figures. Okay, this may be a short amendment, but from the point of view of legislature, we believe it is essential. We're not saying that it would be entirely positive, but rather you decide on the figure, and then we discuss it first. And then we can move amendments if we wish. You know, if you want to promote executive legislature relationship, this is one step you should not skip, really. So from the, my speech, you would see this, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Fernando Cheng is doing much of what the pro-establishment camp actually would like to do. That is, we want to respect different opinions, and we want to find the right balance. Now, whatever the court has decided, there's no way it could be replaced by a payment. That I agree with Felix Chong. But if you kill these three amendments, then we don't even stand a chance to deal with that. Well, actually, if you consider the employers' views, we want them to see that they should assist people, and from the point of view of employees, we want to protect them. So that's why these amendments deserve your support. Dr. K K Kwok.
Mr. Chairman, I speak in support of the amendments of Dr. Fernando Cheng. Well, it is a great regret, this amendment should not have been moved by the Dr. Fernando Cheng. You know, we have members here representing workers, supposedly, for functional constituencies, although this is entirely an unreasonable arrangement. But at least members who are supposedly to represent workers at this functional constituency to speak for workers, but instead of helping out Dr. Fernando Cheng, they are opposing him. I hear a lot of suspicious arguments just now. Because if you look at it carefully, we cannot have reinstatement at our whim, that we have to go through the labor tribunal, and there's a narrow scope of circumstances that apply. And some say the scope may be too narrow. Now, the labor tribunal has made it clear what's meant by U U D. That is, because of pregnancy, or because of paid leave, or because of injury at work, or if there's a breach of safety legislation at work, or most importantly, if someone takes part in union activities. And if people in any of these categories are dismissed, then that's considered U U D. But then we have members here representing the labor unions, how come they are going against the interest of workers? You know, since nineteen ninety-seven, there's no more black and white, there's no more justice. And I'm most disappointed with the secretary's reply. Of course, it's not you who raised this. It's not them within your term. But we must respect the constitutional role of the Legislative Council. You were a member of this council before. Now, of course, there's no chance that Dr. Fernando Cheng's amendments will be passed, but let's say if his amendments were passed, the government would then withdraw the bill for that very reason. Well, then looks like, let's look at the composition of the Labor Advisory Board. It's actually not even a secretary body, it's just an advisory body. So whatever that suits the government, and they will say that this L A B is important, and it's got an important status, because they can manipulate it, we know who's on the L A B. As for employers' representatives, of course, they represent the interest of employers and businesses. For the employees' representatives, F T U holds more than half of the seats, because they hold more than half of the votes, so they will always win seats. You know, the F T U is part of the establishment, actually. The, the F T U has a member in the Exad Council, Mr. Wong Kok Kin's not here, but Mr. Wong Kok Kin is now in the Exco, before it was Zhang Yu Tong. So you know, they are the same gang, they're on the same boat. And then the government holds up this L A B high, and then they, you intimidate members now. Now, when you were a member, would you find, not have found that outrageous? Doesn't matter how poorly formed the legislature is, but at least half of the members here are directly elected. Of course, with the government design, if these amendments are not to the liking
Of course, with the government design, if these amendments are not to the liking of the government or the businesses, there's no way they could be passed. But in any case, given our constitutional status, you should not be openly, uh, opposed to our decision. I think you should read the rules of the, uh, the, the role of, uh, of Leshko. Our, our, we, we are supposed to monitor the government. This is what is left of the representative government.
Well, Dr Law, you should be ashamed of yourself. You were once a scholar and you were once a legislator. The order for reinstatement is subject to very, um, stringent criteria. From nineteen ninety-seven till now, we have waited for over twenty years before this comes back. Dr Quoc, please come back to the three groups of amendments. I am explaining why I support Dr Zheng's amendments. Dr Zheng's amendment says that, well, he has looked into the facts, the changes all these years, so the sum would have to be increased, bringing it back to the reasonable level. People have been talking about the plight faced by SMEs. Most of the cases that go to the Labour Tribunal do not involve SMEs. Most of these outrageous cases involve, um, people who are exercising their rights related to, um, trade union. And this usually involves larger corporations. The most recent case is KMB. As we all know full well, that KMB is quite, is a very mean employer. Some employees stand up against that to speak out, to protect their own rights. The KMB wanted to dismiss those bus drivers unreasonably. You see, there is, uh, an uneven bargaining power with employees having very little bargaining power as opposed to major corporations. What has always been the case that the government tilt towards the business sector, it's been the case for all these years. I don't think that you should, you can simply pay a sum to have the employee dismissed and not reinstate that employee. There are some, um, labour disputes involving larger corporations. The VTC, Cathay Pacific. Employees are employees, as some other people said, the great working class. They are workers, they work from hand to mouth. Some of them may have, um, a higher salary, maybe more than seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars a month. So if you engage in a trade union, uh, in trade union activities, then I pay you seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars to dismiss you, which is less than one month's salary. Well, if you, it's just like those, um, in a teaching profession that have been dismissed recently. There aren't many such teaching posts. Pilots, as you know that similarly, it is not easy to find another job. But now there are lots of, uh, big spenders from the mainland and they would like to have chartered planes. Well, I don't know whether, whether there still be the case with mainland China climbing down so heavily on corrupt behaviour. Well, I don't think in any event that you should not allow people to pay their way out when they have committed something that is illegal or unlawful. Large corporations, as say Cathay Pacific, the, um, eight universities. They don't even feel, uh, the pinch. I hope that, um, the amendments can bring the situ- situation back to reality. Seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, so is just about a monthly salary of about twenty-four thousand dollars. A lot of staff members in Leshko earn more than twenty-four thousand dollars. Well, the Secretary General may say, well, now there is a Leshko, um, labour union and you're involved in it, I will dismiss you. I think that Dr Zheng's amendment is just trying to improve the situation of, um, very little. It's better than nothing. The administration, the FTU, the loyalists are so mean. They, not only do they not support Dr Zheng, they use very mean and harsh words to attack Dr Zheng. What is this all about? Who have spoken for workers? Just read what they have said. You know that they haven't, the situation has changed. If you are an employee, well, you're in a very precarious situation. Don't think you're well protected if you earn twenty-four thousand dollars. Under the employment ordinance, the employers still have the upper hand. It's been over twenty years, they have been dragging their feet for over twenty years. Why isn't it the case that, um, you try to fight for what is right and what is just in this council? And they said that, well, um, it doesn't work if there is no ceiling. You think that Norman Chan will come to us to ask for a compensation that will easily cost you like tens of millions of dollars? Or someone with a salary of Li Ka Xing? Don't worry, Norman Chan will not be part of a union. Those, uh, Fox will not be involved in trade unions. We're talking about those who, who have little bargaining power. Those who exercise their rights, um, of trade union have to fight not just for their own benefit, but for their fellow workers, for better treatment. But this piece of legislation is not there to help them. Most likely, what will happen is, I'm an employer, I'll just give you seventy-two thousand five, five hundred dollars to, to sack you. Well, this is, uh, this is a bogus reinstatement order because the administration is the culprit. They say that, well, you only have to pay seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars to resolve the situation. It's, it's less than a drop in the ocean. A lot of these organizations are publicly funded, so they don't feel the pinch at all. So what is so good about this reinstatement order if you can pay your way out? It's only seventy-two thousand dollars. Well, a few years down the line with inflation, it'll be like sixty, fifty thousand dollars. And twenty years down the line, it will be just pittance. I agree with Dr Zheng. Well, with the amendment for positive vetting. As you know that, um, well, with the colocation is positive vetting. You see that it is not very effective with, with loyalists defending it. For proposals that harm the public with loyalists defending them, it will still go ahead. Nevertheless, we try to fight our corner. We hope that there will be a day when Hong Kong will see full democracy. I know it is very unlikely, look at the situation on New England. Every day we see incidents of, um, journalists being beaten, battered and those, um, who ask for more democracy being disqualified. Still, we have to continue to fight because this is the, the sign of the Leshko. We are given the power, we have public mandate, we are here to defend public justice. It's the administration and the loyalists and those who claim to stand on the side of workers who de- who destroy the system. That is injustice indeed, I shall admit. Mr Ray Chan. Madam Deputy, I speak in support of Dr Fernando Zheng's CSAs in relation to the Employment Amendment Bill twenty seventeen. I would like to let you know what we're here to debate about. Well, this is the reinstatement order. But what is, what is actually about is when an employee, an employer unreasonably and unlawfully dismiss an employee the price to be paid by the employer. There are ways, in such case, for the employer to dismiss the employees. Just that there is a price to pay. Dr Zheng's amendment is to increase the, uh, the, the cost. Unreasonable and unlawful dismissal is not what is said by the employee but the court. The court has considered the case and decides that the conduct of the employer amounts to unlawful and unreasonable dismissal. Um, so loyalists said that the most important thing for employer-employee relationship is that, is harmony, of course. That goes without saying, but we are talking about a stage when the relationship has broken down. The case has gone to, to court. The employee wants to get the final relief, to get justice. The employee will not get his job back because as long as the employer is willing to pay that price, the employee will still be dismissed. So if you're talking about, uh, well, um, working together, I think it is just nonsense at this stage. If they can see eye to eye and they can, and they can agree on something, the case will not have gone to court. Dr Fernando Zheng proposes three groups of amendments. I will start with the mildest one, which is a technical amendment. If you want to oppose to it, you will have to explain why you would oppose to that. This is just to say that, uh, well, in the unlikely event in the future that the administration is kind enough to change the ultimate cost for dismissal of an employee, that is, um, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, what the process involved is. Dr Zheng said that it should be changed from negative vetting to positive vetting to give the electrical more time to study the amount, or at least to pretend to. Well, I, I said to, to pretend to, I will explain later. This is to give a longer scrutiny period to study the, um, proposal by the administration in this case to change the amount. This is to make it, um, more difficult. I don't see any reason why members would oppose to the third group of amendment of Dr Zheng's. Unless you think that the administration's proposal should be final and it's not for amendment, it will be only a waste of time. Well, and if, uh, it will put me in a very embarrassing situation. So I don't support Dr Zheng's amendment. If that is what you think, then you have to make it very clear to everyone. And it's back to what the, uh, secretary said in his speech of the second reading debate. I print, I've printed it out because press release is, um, published as soon as that is done. Perhaps the secretary will say that again. Without the consent of the Labour Advisory Board, if the amount is increased to six times of a monthly salary with no ceiling, it will seriously undermine the corporation system that has been established, um, for a number of years. This will bring far-reaching implications to the relations between an employer and an employee.
So whatever there's any labour discussion that, um, they would just playlist, um, it's a reason like they are recording. And it claims that the government find it unacceptable, so I urge the government, well, that's his words, not mine, uh, to get members to pass the government's bill and to vote against the Dr Chan's amendment. If the Dr Chan's amendments were passed by Leshko and based on the above reasoning, the government would not rule out, withdraw the entire bill. So, and then, um, we now will, we come to the scenario of choosing between a pocket for now or nothing scenario. Well, what's been said by the secretary that would not make those who would support Dr Chan's amendment to switch their mind and to, uh, consider, all, all things considered and, and to choose, uh, well, uh, and it claims that, um, the secretary had convinced us now that we are, uh, moving to their side and vote against your amendments because otherwise would have got nothing. Of course, this won't happen, so this is all very fake. And another point, and this show is put up for the, those people so that, um, those who can tell their labors, sector supporters and claim that the secretary had provided with a basis because he claimed repeatedly that we support Dr Chan's amendment and, um, there will be nothing. So even though Dr Chan's amendments have been reasonable, that I still not able to support it because we have to look at the whole picture. So if this, uh, pro-establishment camp have this thinking that you also vote against your third amendment, um, you don't have to put on the show anymore, otherwise you'll be caught. And then the longer you put on the show, the more opportunities that we will get caught. So, um, they would just, uh, uh, they would just, um, uh, um, pass through a negative scrutiny that we, um, enacted, commenced automatically without putting it to the vote. And, and that's what happened that if you vote for Dr Chan's amendment. And for the two, of the two amendments by Dr Chan, if some amendments are seen to be misleading. So you claim that, um, if you have, only have two workers and if one of them, uh, be dismissed, that you cannot hire the replacement, then your business will close because you're not able to hire a replacement. Or by then, if it coming closed down, there'll be, uh, no relief. Well, probably this cannot reinstated since the company had vanished. This not how it should work. Of course, they will hire someone to fill the vacancy. How would the Dr Chan's amendments claim that, um, you cannot use, uh, having hired a replacement as an ex- uh, excuse to deny reinstatement? So, um, that, that could not be considered by the court as, um, supporting grounds. Of course, and if, uh, the ruling made in favor of the employer, that the position be reinstated and the replacement will have to, uh, be quit. However, there's no such thing in existing legislation. Um, there's no absolute right to reinstatement. So, um, they're only be entitled to this so-called hu- uh, humiliation money or so compensation. So Mister Philistown claimed that Doctor Chan have asked for absolute right to reinstatement. On the other hand, um, by raising to six month salaries. And removing the cap at seven two thousand five hundred dollars. So at the end, you're just asking for more money. So you're not being, uh, so as, um, um, pure in claiming that, um, he can dismiss casually. And they labor rights and paramount and cannot be bought out with money. So we shouldn't shouldn't be touch on that either. So just emphasize on absolute right to reinstatement. There's no way can bring this up. And from the labor rights standpoint, the labors have a choice. So some of them would for housing somebody. So when it get to this step, when they have been relationship broken down. Well, for reinstatement, um, it's simply painful. So even if the reinstatement, you can still be dismissed again and then be entitled for compensation. So it seemed to fall into as a vicious cycle. Unless you can make criminal offense of not honoring the reinstatement order. By then, you're able to achieve the absolute right, but there's no such thing is extinct in the proposed bill. And for the removal of the upper limit as proposed by Doctor Chan. I've said many times that it is reasonable and members claim that in discrimination ordinance, if not. For the gender, race, and ethnicity, there's no cap to their compensation. So the administration must respond. Of course, the administration can claim they have no position. If the L A B is able to agree to the six time proposal, the government will clap their hands. So does the government really has no role to play? So it seems to, um, throwing the ball to either side and let the employer to employee decide to negotiate among themselves. However, in this difference in bargaining position, so so able to. Achieve improvements in a very glacial pace. However, some will say a little progress is still progress. However, um, those members at the pan Democrat can be cared about labor rights. Claim that we've been fighting it for over a decade. So it's still be as contentious ten years on now. If the government does not have the determination, but rather stupidly ask claim them to negotiate among themselves. And then otherwise you would just withdraw. Wouldn't call that a dereliction of duty. So. If this how the government or the secretary should do the duties, then everyone can do this. So for the sexual discrimination ordinance, you claims that I'm deciding that I have a consensus. Is there any policies that are not contentious? Or let's say for the national anthem laws, for example. So the government should stay on the weaker side to speak for them. And today, um, I've been repeating the secretary's words that you not rule out withdrawing this bill. The labor sector. Will not truly accept this for the poor establishment. Members for the labor constituency, I think should continue to criticize the administration. And then vote against or abstain from voting on Doctor Chan's amendments. I think this how this script should be played out. Well, that's my suggest for the F T U, so I submitted. Mister Liang Yuchong.
Madam Deputy. I will speak on the Doctor Chan amendment. On, uh, proposed amendment of thirty two N A. When B to clause five to increase the further sum from three times to six times the average monthly wage. With a ceiling of seventy thousand five hundred dollars removed. So let me explain the meaning of removing a ceiling. The spirit of the law was set at seventy two thousand five hundred dollars. That regardless of the salary of the employee, that with the maximum payout. So in removing the cap, this happened that there will be one billion or ten billion dollar payout in the future. It seems that, um, uh, the amount has been packed to six months to month the. Salary. So this is nothing astronomical. So some members claim that if this and cap doesn't mean involve a lot of money. It's simply take out of context without understand the reality. I I wonder what I'm explaining for Doctor Chan. It's actually a ceiling, that's the six months salary. It says that there will not have an actual ceiling. So even, uh, be limited to for the six months of the dismissed workers' pay. What I want to criticize. That the L A B will not discuss Doctor Chan's amendments. And now it is being debated at the council. And the employers worried that in raising the further sums and removing the ceiling. That would led to employees abuse. So on issue of abuse, I I wonder can the secretary explain? And is it your view that the employees will abuse this mechanism? So you have to jump through two obstacles. First, you have to pass the unlawful and reasonable dismissal. And further, the court will have to satisfy that the reinstatement or reinstatement order is awarded. And then the court have been satisfied that what is reasonably practicable. And in a process, the employers can raise the objections. So in a process, it's not like the employees will be reinstated as their own wish. And the court will also have to evaluate this relationship between the employee and employees before making this ruling. So the threshold is very, very high to have the court to issue a reinstated order. Um, they'll actually very quite difficult. And yet the employers is when unwilling to reinstate the employee. By then, the court will decide whether, uh, to, um. Award this payment and and only be at a max the six times the employee. Six month salary. And at the same time, um, the bar is set incredibly high. So why so how is it that being accused of being abused? So, oh, it's it's simply a case of worrying too much or. So I remember Mister Holden Chow or is it him that, um. For the SMEs, um, they will be up in arms and they will be. Not able to worry about whether their business can be sustained. We truly understand the spirit of this bill. And so what is the actual likelihood that this further sum must be paid? I suppose the likelihood will be very, very slim. Um, there's a very good example in the case of the Cali motor bus. There's some employees have is spread dissatisfaction against home policy. And they speak out to protect their to lobby for their rights. It's and the company made a decision to dismiss these employees. For disobeying the company guidelines. Of course, there's a mechanism in place. We let them lodge an appeal. And and they were eventually reinstated. In reality. Um, um, this kind of cases, uh, doesn't come out often don't come to the courts. And there are other mechanisms in place through conciliation at the labor departments and the issues can be addressed. So to reach this final hurdle, um, the circumstances are really bad. So from the labor's point of view, the most likely what will happen that. Um, it will only happen when the employee employee are simply irrevocably damaged.
Now, many employees may have worked in the same company for years. And they have dispond to the company. They don't want everyone to lose out. And so this is not going to happen. The employee would want the company to stay afloat and then they could. Work harmoniously there. Then, uh, maybe some employees, um, have become the representatives of staff. And then they bargain with the employers on the terms. And then they are targeted and there's retaliation. So we need to protect the workers' representatives without a legal basis. It would be difficult for us to promote better labor relations. I don't know why the government wouldn't allow collective bargaining. I don't know why the government won't do more to enhance the status of labor unions. Well, as I said yesterday, this bill is better than nothing. It's just minor improvement, but I still cannot protect staff representatives. Who fight for the interest of their colleagues. But at least the government is prepared to amend the reinstatement order arrangement. Because in the past, it's too preposterous. You need the consent of employers before there could be a statement. But I mean, that's totally ridiculous. I don't know how the former government could come up with something like that. So they're just trying to, you know, get rid of the 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 debate, that's all. But today, it is at least a small step forward. That means that the court could make the order and the employer must comply with the order. But then, now in this bill, employees are allowed to buy out the court order. And as some member said, if it's just seventy two thousand dollars, how deterrent is that? And I don't want to use the term deterrent because it means nothing for it to be deterrent. But what is important is once the court makes an order. Employers are allowed to ignore it. Then what's left of the dignity of the court? Now, the court has considered all the circumstances in great depth before it comes to a ruling. For a reinstatement order, but still, the order, the employee could just ignore it. So what's left of the dignity of the court? Now, we say in Hong Kong, we respect her judicial independence and the spirit of the rule of law. So by the rule of law, the court has ordered the reinstatement. And it's after the court has considered all the evidence and circumstances. And whether it's practicable before the court makes such an order. So we not talk about the deterrent effect, really. We're talking about the punishment on the employer when he chooses to defy the court order. And if that's the case, why isn't it a heavy penalty? Some members suggested the employee should be sent to jail. Yes, he should. Because the employee is not complying with the court order, so of course he should be imprisoned. But of course, the government is not going to do that. They are worried of scaring the business sector and no one would want to make investments. So that's what the government is bound to say. Now, Doctor Fernando Jung, uh, it it such amendment is actually the middle path. So so we won't want to scare away investors, uh, we don't want to be locked in an argument over that. Then that's why he's come up with this middle of the road approach. And so instead, we will increase the penalty. We know living standards, living costs are going up, wages are going up. And it's possible. That even for those in the management may fight for the rights of workers. But then then they may be fired as a result. So we need to give them protection and that's why I think this amendment is reasonable. Now, Mister Holden Chow said that we should respect the L A B. It's only because of the L A B we have come up, we've got this proposal. And the government said yesterday, the position of the L A B is the position of the government. So we do not accept this proposal from the government or the L A B. There's a chance the government will withdraw it altogether. That's regrettable. Now, the secretary was once a member of this council. I wonder how much importance he attaches. How seriously he takes the role of the Legislative Council? So the electrical is now just a rubber stamp. We just to defer to the views of the L A B. So are we still a legislative council? Or is it that we have to follow what the L A B says? Otherwise, the government would just withdraw the proposal. So it seems that we've become just a rubber stamp. Is that really what, how it should be? Well, if you say yes, well, then it's end of discussion. Now, we are a democratically elected legislature. And so we are just supposed to listen to what the L A B says. Well, if that's the case, then we're just a rubber stamp. And what more can we say? But you may want this to happen. I don't. Because I'm elected, I'm elected member of this council. I'm elected by the public, by one person, one vote. So I have the mandate. Not to be a yes man in this council. I don't just do the bidding of others. Uh, I'm not a rubber stamp. I have my own position. I have my own views. We don't care what the government structure is. But rather, I'll consider how I can best protect the rights and interests of workers. If there's something I can do, why won't I do it? I don't think this is intimidation by the government. I think the government is being overbearing. It's not being reasonable and I find that most regrettable. Now, someone who's, um, been striving for democracy. All of a sudden, he's now handing the power to the L A B. What did you say? That's sad. We know there's a little chance of these amendments being passed today. But even if that's the case, well, this council has a role to play. We're here to give different views and that's what we should cherish. We shouldn't just defer to the views of an established institution. And then we close our eyes and follow blindly that decision. No, we mustn't do that. So I submit. Mister Wong Ting Kwong.